All right, thank you Brian and welcome everyone to this June 10th meeting of the Homewood City Council. We start tonight with a proclamation for the Lake Shore Lakers, so I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can have the Lake Shore Laker champions come up front.
That's perfect.
And I will read this proclamation out to you guys and then again, as we talked about earlier, if you want to say a few words, feel free. I know there's also another presentation you'd like to give as well, so, yes. Whereas, the city of Homewood, Alabama wishes to honor and recognize the Lake Shore Foundation Lakers as recipients of the 2024 NWBA, which is the National Wheelchair Basketball Association, varsity junior national championships. And whereas, the Lake Shore Foundation Lakers are back-to-back champions with wins in 2023 and 24. Savannah Gardner, the head coach, was also named the 2024 NWBA Coach of the Year. And whereas, the Lake Shore Foundation Laker, Jackson Horn, was named the MVP and made first team all tournament with Giant Jackson and Jakarius Kemp named female and male tournament MVPs. And whereas, the Lake Shore Foundation is a local nonprofit that provides individuals with disabilities a chance to live a healthy lifestyle through recreation, research, advocacy, and healthy promotions. And whereas, the mayor and the city council would like to recognize those individuals that spread a positive message and shine a spotlight on beneficial influence in our city through their hard work and sacrifice. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the city of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby congratulate the Lake Shore Foundation Lakers coach and team for two outstanding seasons and wish them many more in the future. So congratulations, guys. Yeah, yeah, get a picture?
I'll just say, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you guys and for the opportunity to be here. This is a really, really special moment in Lake Shore's history and in my history as well, and I'm just so proud of these guys. It's nothing that Sean or I have done. You know, it's a very great honor to be their coach and I talk a lot and you can say a lot of words throughout a season, but if you don't have the athletes that can follow the direction and execute what you're telling them, then it's just a lot of hot air. And so they make us look really, really good and I'm very proud of them and they deserve all the recognition.
Well, thank you guys, we appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Counselor Smith and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone please stand.
You'll bow your heads and pray with me. Gracious God, as we come today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore we seek your direction in our decision-making. Proverbs 3:55-6 says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding, and all your ways submit to him, and he will make your path straight." Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and open minds. May we be not quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. We trust that you will guide us on this path and lead us to reach a consensus that reflects your will. May your words and actions be guided by your love and by our, may our words and actions be guided by your love and grace. In your mighty and matchless name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Counselor Smith. And Mr. Seacrest, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton.
Here.
Gier. Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton. Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nels.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President Wyatt.
Here.
And actually, I think Mr. Wolverton just walked in. So that will give us 10 tonight. All right, next we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of May 20, 2024. Those have previously been distributed. I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Waltonie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Those are approved 10 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. First, we have an at-large HEC appointment and I believe that we had one applicant that, well, I think that the appointment is Nancy Womack, is that correct? Okay, so would that be your motion to appoint her?
That would be the motion, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Wolverton, we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0, congratulations to Ms. Womack. And then, Ms. Smith, you need a historic preservation spot?
Yes, I need to open up one of the at-large spots on the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission, Rachel Mobley's spot. She is leaving her spot early and I would like to keep that open until July the 9th.
All right, so then we'll close that at 4:30 on July the 9th. Excuse me, there are no additions to the agenda tonight, so I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the published agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 10 to 0, which brings us to old business. First item, 07-05-24, request to upgrade PC network tech position to Network Systems Administrator. This is brought to us by Brandon Sims of our IT department. And we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'm going to yield to Mrs. Smith, who chaired the meeting, so it's okay.
So, the committee met last week and heard from Mr. Sims. He is needing some assistance in the IT department, so we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving upgrading the PC network tech position to a Network Systems Administrator. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Andy Waltonie and I believe it was, yeah, 4 to 0 vote.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance, any questions or comments?
Do you know how long that's going to take for, to fill that?
He said he had not even looked to see if there was a list because he just wanted to make sure he could get the approval first, so.
It'll take a little while.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0 and we resolution 2472. Next item, 08-05-24, request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 23-24. This comes for Public Works transfer to street materials and supplies and Parks transfer to traveling conferences, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. And another report from Finance, Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee heard from Mr. Squires. He has some new employees in the Parks Department that were going to need to be attending some conferences to get some certifications and we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving those transfers. The motion was made by Mr. Waltonie and seconded by Mr. Alamon, it was a 4 to 0 vote. And just part of the transfer was, we're still paying dump fees because we're still dumping things left from the tornado in December.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, so we have another motion from Finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 10 to 0 and we resolution 2473. Next item, 09-05-24, request for permission to adopt the Division G Multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and have the mayor sign a validation agreement, brought to us by Chief Broadhead and Cale Smith. And another report from Finance, Ms. Smith?
Yes, we heard from Cale Smith. This is something that we sort of have to do and actually we're, I think, a little late in doing it, so committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving the agreement and having the mayor sign that. Motion was made by Mr. Harden and seconded by Mr. Waltonie, 4 to 0.
All right, so we have another motion from Finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's approved 10 to 0 and we resolution 2474. Next item, 10-05-24, request for the mayor to sign an agreement with the city of Mountain Brook for fire equipment. This is also brought to us by Chief Broadhead. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltonie.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, after hearing from Battalion Chief Glover, the committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Harden, seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Safety, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 10 to 0 and we resolution 2475. Next item, 11-05-24, request for the mayor to sign an agreement with Regional Training Institute for Clinical Rotations with the Homewood Fire Department. This is also brought to us by Chief Broadhead. And another report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltonie.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, after hearing from Battalion Chief Glover again, the committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right, so we have another motion from Public Safety, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That is also 10 to 0 and we resolution 2476. Next item, 12-05-24, request for consideration to expand Entertainment District in West Homewood. This is brought to us by Counselor Alamon. And we'll start with another report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltonie.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, after hearing from Counselor Alamon, the committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Nels and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, if you will give us a first reading, please.
Yes, there's an ordinance to amend Section 3-47 entitled, "West Homewood Entertainment District Establishment," to Chapter 3 entitled, "Acalca Beverages of Article 3 entitled, Entertainment Districts of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood. Be ordained as follows. The section 3.47 entitled, "West Homewood Entertainment District," is amended to read as follows. The district is hereby established by the adoption of this ordinance with the boundary set forth as follows. Area owned along Oak Grove Road, Oxmoor Road and Oak Grove Road as displayed in Exhibit A. Section 2, the if any part of provision, the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional. All other parts remain full force and effect. Section 3, legal rights not impaired, nothing in this ordinance or the code hereby adopted shall be construed to affect any suit or pending litigation. Section 4, publication of the ordinance, the city clerk shall publish the ordinance as required by law. Section 4, the effective date of the ordinance, ordinance shall, and the rules and regulations and provisions relating there too shall be effective immediately upon the adoption by the city council.
All right, thank you. I entertain a motion for unanimous, a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Waltonie. And a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltonie?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so now I entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Again, a motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Wolverton. And another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Counselor Waltonie?
Yes, sir.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that passes 10 to 0 and we ordinance 29-02. Next item, 13-05-24, request for author, request to authorize an ordinance to prevent non-authorized vehicles, motorcycles, golf carts, et cetera, on the Greenway Phase 1 and 2 trails. This is brought to us by Counselor Jones. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltonie.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee vote met and voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this ordinance to prevent non-authorized motor vehicles on the trail. The motion was made by Counselor Nels, seconded by Counselor Harden. And just one point for clarification, to ensure that we are aligning with the request of the agenda item, the ordinance that we were discussing, Mr. Kendrick will be reading, would be the one to prohibit non-motorized vehicles on the green trail, right?
Prohibit motorized vehicles.
Motorized. Sorry, motorized. I had non-motorized here in the notes, so. Non-authorized. So just make sure we have that clarification, that it's just the trail.
Correct. All right, Mr. Kendrick, you will give us a first reading of this ordinance.
Yes, there's an ordinance to prohibit all motorized vehicles or devices from the green trail located in the city of Homewood, which limitations include, but are not limited to motorized scooters, skateboards, golf carts, motorcycle, or other motorized vehicles, other motorized devices, except for those devices used in the transport of handicapped or disabled persons or for official use by employees of the city of Homewood. Be ordained as follows, that the use of motorized vehicles or devices on the green trail located in the city of Homewood shall be prohibited, which limitations include, but not be limited to motorized scooters, skateboards, golf carts, motorcycles, otherwise motorized devices, except those motorized devices or equipment used by employees of the city shall be exempted from this prohibition. Section 2, the violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor. Any person found guilty violating such ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 3, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erect signs along the green trail located in the city of Homewood. Section 4, that the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council or approved by the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. And a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
I have one question. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
When Mr. Kendrick was reading this, it just made me, you're referencing the penalties for, for the offender and you said that that is, could you define what the penalty is? It's not a fine, is that correct?
No, it's a, well, it can be a fine. You can, there's a, there's a section in the Code of Ordinances, Section 1-8, that provides for the punishment for all misdemeanors in the city, which is the same as it is the other cities in the country.
Okay, so it's a misdemeanor for an offense?
The city courts only have jurisdiction of the misdemeanor.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
All right.
And one of my questions is, if you have a bicycle with electric, that can do both electric and, and?
Electric bike.
Correct. Yeah, so that would, that is not included in this as a motorized vehicle.
I didn't think so, reading, I read it and it said motorized and, okay, good.
Correct. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Or, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Seacrest, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes. Counselor Waltonie?
Yes, sir.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes, all right, so that passes and will be ordinance 29-03. Next item, 15-05-24, request for consideration of a sign variance at 817 Greens Springs Highway, The Edge, brought to us by Candace, brought to us by The Edge, Candace Watson and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and heard from Don Halls and Mr. Pugh and the committee voted 5 to 0 to set the public hearing for this request for June 24th at 6:00 PM and refer the item out to the full council without recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right, so we will set that public hearing for June 24th at 6:00 PM. Next item, 16-05-24, request for consideration of a sign variance at 190 Vulcan Road, brought to us by Birmingham Luxury Motors, Alan Cobb of Alabama Signorama, and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, same thing, we heard from Chris Wayne and Mr. Pugh and committee voted 5 to 0 to set the public hearing for this request for June 24th at 6:00 PM and refer the item out to the full council without recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrus again.
All right, so we'll set that public hearing also for the 24th at 6:00 PM. That brings us to the Committee Referral Agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Waltonie, second from Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 10 to 0, which brings us to other new business, 04-06-24, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone 2917 Linden Avenue from C1 to C4A. The applicant is Virginia Allen to facilitate its redevelopment for appropriate retail uses. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a 5 to 0 favorable recommendation. So we will set that public hearing, Mr. Kendrick, we need to set that for?
July 8th is the first time that we have.
July 8th?
Yes.
For July, July 8th at 6:00 PM. All right, next item, 05-06-24, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 21, 2024 through June 10, 2024, brought to us by J.J. Bischoff and I saw Mr. Alamon back there looking at him?
Yes, I'd like to approve the vouchers, except we're going to withhold the Am Waste vouchers. We worked through some things there, but otherwise I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Alamon?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 10 to 0. And that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor, you have any announcements?
Just a few things, reminders. One, this Saturday, June 15th, for those of you who are not aware, Birmingham Budweiser and the Folds of Honor will be presenting the Clydesdale horses here in Homewood. Starting at 2 o'clock, there will be a path, like a parade, that will cover a lot of the downtown area, including Reece Street and, and Oxmoor Road and then of course 18th Street. And then the Clydesdales will actually be on display at City Hall from 3 until 5. So for those of you who have not ever seen the Clydesdales in person, I saw them several years ago out in Hoover at the, at the Galleria. They are very impressive animals, so it's really cool to have them come through the city, so we're excited about that. We are just a few weeks away, of course, from all the 4th of July festivities in downtown Homewood. And then just a reminder that on the 27th of next month is the Homewood Downtown Sidewalk Sale, so, but that's it.
Thank you very much. One real quick thing, Ms. Smith, I think you said July 9th that you wanted the historic preservation to close on Janelle, July 9th, and shame on me for not looking at the calendar, you meant July 8th, correct?
I just looked it wrong.
No, that's okay, so it'll be July 8th at 4:30.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. All right, Mr. Waltonie?
I have no comments this evening and I do not need to set Public Safety.
Okay, Mr. Alamon?
I just wanted to wish Andrew Wolverton happy birthday. We missed the last meeting, we get to wish him happy birthday and that's about it, I have no other comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Ooh, birthday, youngster, kiddo. Yeah, exactly.
That's what my kids have been telling me all year, so.
Call me when you hit a real big one.
Yeah. I know, I know. I know. I'm fully aware.
To be 40 again.
A little bruised from the party the other night, so. And I actually celebrated a friend's birthday party last week in Seattle, so that's why I was gone from committees, but apparently when you're 40, you can still go ride bikes 50 miles and play paintball right afterwards in the rain, so, you know, it was all, it was all good. Yeah, so, I've got one, one agenda item is all I saw. So, just setting committee for, I guess after Finance, and then, other than that, we, obviously we had, we had hopes of having StreetFest, it got rained out, so every once in a while those things happen, but wanted to thank those that are involved in getting those things set up and obviously we've got another opportunity with the back-to-school bash in the fall. Other than that, there was another race in the neighborhood Saturday I didn't even know about, so just goes to show that Homewood is very popular for all sorts of races and I believe this one was, after, after I heard about it, was for, it was an Eskridge and White Memorial Run, so, but yeah, it was right, right in and around Patriot Park. What's that?
Farmer's Market, when is that?
Oh, yes, and the Farmer's Market last, started last week, so every Tuesday night for, from here through the first week of August, Farmer's Market's going. But thank you guys for your support with expanding the entertainment district. I know it makes, it makes a lot of sense as the development is speeding along and so we'll just have everything lined up and ready to go. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thanks, I just wanted to thank you, President Wyatt, for your participation in the City Manager Forum last Tuesday, as well as appreciation to Sam Gaston, City Manager of Mountain Brook, who presented. His presentation is actually online, if anyone missed the forum and wants to check that out. Also, thanks to Counselors Andrus and Gier and Mayor McCloskey for their attendance and participation. There will be another forum this Friday at City Hall on the second floor. It's actually going to start at 11:00 AM and then the presentations will start at 11:30. The presentations will start with Gretchen DeFonte, who's the City Manager at Pelham, and then that will be followed by President Wyatt, who's going to overview Homewood's consideration of the City Manager structure. And then we'll have some questions like last time and try to wrap up by 12:30 so everybody can get back to work. But just wanted to reference that, invite everybody to join who's still looking for more information about the City Manager consideration as we, you know, progress that conversation, because last time it was, it was really a great event. It went a little long, but I think it was good conversation, so, thanks to everybody who came out and please spread the word about Friday.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee will meet at 5 and I want to thank you for your, I know you've done so many presentations on the City Manager and it's almost like we should just take a recording of the first one you did and, you know, you're really having to, to go out and do that, but I appreciate, the one at the chamber was very succinct and, you know, very helpful, so, thank you for that. And then also thank you, I was out last week and I appreciate being able to read what, what I wanted and you, you got exactly what I was, the spirit of what I was looking for, so I'm sorry I didn't participate, but I had all the faith in it. The ordinance was exactly as I had, was looking for, so thank you for all your work. I feel like we're really working in the same direction and on the same page and I appreciate everyone's participation with that and I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I don't need to set Special Issues, yay. And I have a couple of other things, so the Historic Preservation Commission meets tomorrow night here at City Hall at 7:00 PM up on the fourth floor and we have had, one of our members has come up with some really great ideas for things going forward that we're going to be discussing, including some centennial possible planning, so looking forward to that. We have, the Chamber is holding a downtown merchants meeting here in Chambers on Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM, so if any other counselors, I think Jennifer and I are planning on being here, but if any other, anybody else is free at 9:00 AM on Wednesday and can be here, I think Shay would love that. And we have, as of tonight, we have 439 signatures for the City Manager position. You know, I think we're kind of getting to the point now, we really need all hands on deck, so if those of you can, can grab a few signatures in your neighborhood or from friends or wherever, that would be awesome. I'm kind of become weird about counting them, so I know exactly how many we have. So, you know, I think Andy mentioned that he had some that he could bring in, so just be on the lookout. Jen and I have kind of been just keeping petition sheets with us wherever we go and You know, I think we need about 550 approved signatures, so having some extras is not a bad thing. Just keep that in mind as you're out and about in Homewood. And I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Nels?
I don't have anything tonight, but I am getting signatures. And we'll have hopefully a bunch more next week.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrus?
I do need to set P and D, so I will do that to follow Public Works. And I wanted to thank the Fire Department for having me and my son, John, on Memorial Day for the Murph workout, which we do in honor and memory of Navy SEAL Lieutenant Michael Murphy. And we had a great time. And anyway, anybody can join us. I modify. I do not do right. Like, I do ring pull-ups. I don't wear vests. And I do incline push-ups. So I totally modify, so anybody can join us next year. Although I will say that I'm committing to starting off with the vest on next year, so I will say that. But my college athlete, 21-year-old son, could only get through half the workout. And he was wearing the vest, I will say that, and doing full pull-ups and push-ups. But so anyway, it was the range. But the guys have been out... You know, we had storms that morning. And so the guys have been in Mountain Brook. And, you know, so they just really, just absolutely, you know, the heroes in our Fire Department. And but they started trickling in and made a great morning with them. So it was really... I love doing that on Memorial Day. I absolutely love it. So anyone joining us next year, we'd love to have y'all. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Harden?
I'm going to be here a while.